Special meeting for to review the staff's recommended or the staff's comments on the audit. This meeting has been duly noticed and advertised, and we are ready to continue. We have no agenda other than I'm going to ask Commissioner Goddard to say the pledge, the prayer. Commissioner Pickens, if you'll do the pledge. We will take staff presentations, public comments, and then the Board of County Commissioners will make recommendations and we'll adjourn the meeting. Fall would rise please for the prayer.
Lord, thank you for this time that we get to share our moments here and our thoughts. Help us to make good decisions, Lord, that will do the best for our people here. Be with us as we make these decisions, Lord. Be with us as we go out amongst everybody and we turn your blessings back over to them, Lord. And we thank you so much for these things. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard, Commissioner Pickens, and good morning to everyone in the audience in here. We recognize Superintendent of Elections, Supervisor of Elections, Mr. Charles Overtur is in the room. And Councilman Beck, again, from Pomona Park, we thank you for being here. And former County Commissioner Carl Flag is in the room. Thank you for being here, sir. Okay, we will turn this over to Mr. Leary for staff presentations on the audit response.
Well, I'm not sure how you want to proceed with this, Mr. Chairman. I don't know whether you want a verbatim review of what we have presented to you in as a draft of the staff's responses to the preliminary audit findings. I don't necessarily know that a verbatim review of this is necessary. I mean, you know, we-
Mr. Chair, if I could, I agree with Mr. Leary. We have been over this numerous times, and I'd like to hear the staff recommendations for their responses.
Well, maybe you could give us the real short version? I don't think, yeah, I don't think there's a lot of these out in the public, or do you have those? Okay, everybody has them? Then let's just kind of briefly touch on them real quick as we go, okay?
Okay. I think that what we tried to do is, at the last meeting that we had, we tried to characterize in very broad terms what the county's position would be on the findings. And in that interim period, we have refined and honed those responses and provided additional, more detailed response with attachments that you have. You have. Public doesn't have all of the attachments because they are a little bit voluminous.
Right.
But the attachments do support the, some of the details that we have, we have offered to support the detailed information that we have offered up that does expand upon the county's responses and offer supporting documentation to some of the things that we think should necessitate perhaps a little closer look into a couple of the items that the auditors question. And of course, as we indicated at the, at the last meeting, there are certain findings that the county does not dispute.
Right.
So largely, the, in finding number one, dealing with the, you know, the contracting relative to the health insurance and the workers' comp insurance, our position largely doesn't, hasn't changed in that, you know, we have noted that, you know, based on largely on the county attorney's opinion, that renewals are an acceptable mechanism for the county to exercise, based on a previous bidding. I think Ms. Allen detailed to you at the last gathering, the process that the county has followed. We have offered up to the auditors in, in a little bit more detail, the process that the county has followed. And, and we have also noted that, you know, the state of Florida does not bid its insurance on an annual basis. So, you know, we think that they're having noted and implied in their, in their findings that that is something that the county should do on an annual basis. You know, we have offered up the fact that, that that's not necessarily something that is required under statute, per the county attorney's opinion, and in fact, other governmental entities, not only counties and cities, but the state of Florida, does not do that on an annual basis. And, you know, we'd be happy to elaborate on any of the, you know, any of the other details, items regarding the fire trucks, or amulets, or the other vehicles, fuel, fuel products, road services, and the cadaver transportation services. Under finding one, you know, under the fire trucks, there was some, there was some question relative to the county's process in purchasing the fire trucks and the attachments that are included in the responses. We think clearly detail that the county was exercising the most prudent approach to these acquisitions and have offered up the, the process that the county followed under the Florida, under the FSA contracting, that the county secured the best possible price, which was in fact, lower than the contract bid by St. John's County for comparable equipment, and considerably lower than, you know, than the vehicle, for a four-door vehicle that could have been purchased through FSA contracting. So, you know, we have, we have offered, offered up the excerpts from the FSA contract for further review by the auditors. And, you know, we thought that that information had been provided at the time of the inquiries. Perhaps it was not crystallized when it was reviewed with, by staff, with the auditors. But we think that the information in its form being presented here with the attachments maybe will, will substantiate a little bit more clearly the argument that was being made or the explanation that was being offered during the time of the inquiry. So, and that's, and pretty much that's the same approach that the county is taking relative to the ambulance purchase, that the approach that the county took was, in fact, the most prudent approach that resulted in the most, most efficient use of the county's dollars and resulted in acquisition of ambulances that served the, the need for the county with the, with the best utilization of the dollars available. And if I could, you know, just, in, under the, under the four-vehicle purchase, you know, we acknowledged, we acknowledged there that, you know, those four vehicles that were required did not get the, did not really see the explicit approval of the Board of Commissioners. The only thing we can note there is that those, the prices that were paid for those vehicles purchased locally were prices equivalent to the pricing that could have been, that could have been had under Florida state contract pricing. Fuel products, if you recall, Ms. Dillon spoke to you about, about that. We feel like we are getting the best pricing available. Admittedly, it hasn't been formally bid, but I think she proffered an opinion that a formal bidding may result, may actually result in a higher cost to the county, even though we are paying, paying an adjusted price, the, based on the, the fuel price itself is based on the oil price information service, which is a local market cost, and then there is, there is the, there is an adjusted price to that. But we're, we're paying the base, the same base price that we have paid for years, and that adjusted price changes on an annual basis. The road services contract, actually, we discussed that at the Transportation Committee meeting. This has to do with, you know, the roads in the forest, and, you know, we discussed what we thought was a resolution to that particular issue, and, and we'll be actually turning those roads back over to be the responsibility of the Forest Service.
Well, I'd like to talk about that, because in the transportation meeting, we did talk about keeping one of those roads for that Black Bear scenic highway. We might want to adjust that statement that we were looking to turn over most of the roads, but possibly not all of the roads.
Well, actually, we did consider that in this response, and that's why we indicated except through limited piggyback of the state contract. That's, we'll do a limited piggyback on the state contract to cover those roads, at least until the time that, that those improvements are made, that were discussed, and then at that point, those can be turned over as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And under the cadaver transportation services, you know, we tried to, have tried to provide an explanation as to really what, what the situation was during, during the years 2004 through 2014, when, when it, when it was bid. Again, following some indications of interest from other parties in 2013, that they would like to provide that service, noting that for a number of years, that there were no other providers who were interested in providing that service, and that's why it wasn't put out to bid. It probably should have been, you know, we, I think admittedly were, told you that we, the county became complacent because there was no other interest being expressed by anybody for a number of years in there. But, you know, we just tried to explain why that situation was the way it was.
You know, I think, if I may, back in my other career, sometimes I wanted to do business with municipalities or governments, but only to find out they weren't going out for bid or whatever. I just, I don't, I think as a business owner, it's important to know when the process is out for bid, not just is it initiated by someone who says, "I'd be interested in bidding if I had an opportunity to." And I think that's where we could really help out our local businesses by having, at this time, we, if you're interested, or if we're going to go out for bid, we should maintain a policy to that, so that our local vendors could respond to that.
Well, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to point out, in this particular situation, we went out to bid, and the price to the taxpayers tripled.
Okay. And that's duly noted. I agree. I think that's very important to know.
On the cadaver.
That's right.
All right.
Can I?
Yes, please. Ask questions as we go, please.
Because I am curious.
Mm-hmm.
Did, did our overall price triple?
It's a individual trip, tripled, per cadaver.
Because we went out for, for quote?
We had a good deal, much like your fuel. We had locals that were sensitive to our budgetary needs and that sort of thing, not particularly on a weekly or monthly basis, but we had a good deal. Mr. Leary and the attorney struck good deals with them, and, you know, it's, sometimes going out to bid can result in a higher price. And, you know, things called fight price fit, I'm not saying any of this is taking place, but when you have a good deal, recognize it. That's all I've got to say.
Right. But I, you know, I, I agree, though, that we probably still should go out for bid.
I agree.
I mean, I, I bid on a lot of work when I was a contractor. I don't want to see our costs go up, but I really believe we probably should go out for bid.
If you are legally in your right not to go out, and you have, you feel, as this board discusses, we have a good deal, don't mess with it. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying break the law.
Right, no.
You know, just like in the case of health insurance, you know, the, the auditors came back with an opinion that is not necessarily what the state statutes would suggest.
Right.
And this happens, I mean, you have to do your homework.
And it's, I mean, more than once have we had this, where we went out for bid and it was a higher cost?
It's not unusual.
Is that based on the fact that people know what we're paying now and pretty much decide?
They know what we're paying now, they know what our budget is, this is government in the sunshine.
Yeah, but I've watched roads, and honestly, some of the awards that we get from, say, FDOT, the bids come back exactly what the FDOT grant was for. So you know they didn't really do their homework, they just threw the bid out there. And those who really did their homework, recently, out in the West End, and the municipality out there, there's a $700,000 difference, end quotes, for the same road. Because one said, "I want to do this job," and the other one said, "I want to get the money from FDOT." That was the bottom line.
It's a hunger issue, and some, depending on what you're securing services or commodities, depending on which you're, you're securing, sometimes there's hunger, sometimes there is.
Well, I think we learned that with the Derric boat vessel situation, is that, yeah, everybody wants to remove those boats until the hurricane came, and then so much work is involved. With other stuff that they could make money on, they don't want to deal with the boats again. And that's what we got caught in. But you never know what's going to happen, so you're, you're right. Thank you.
And if I could, in, in response to Commissioner Goddard, one thing that, that we wanted to point out, and we did a number of places in this response, is that the county's procurement code does allow the BLCC to waive the bidding requirements when it feels it's in the best interest of the county, and that goes to Commissioner Leibel's point as well. And in the past, that, that was oftentimes implied, and, and we've already made a change, since I've been here, that we are expressly providing for that waiver in the agenda items when it is being requested, so it's known upfront.
If you can't get any better than that.
Mr. Chairman. It does need to be known upfront, that's-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could I add a comment to this? I think what the attorney said is, is an option, because I've sat in these meetings
with the Auditor General folks every time they've come, and in their first meeting, in their presentations where they talked about some of their findings, I questioned them, I said, "So are you saying that, particularly when it was the issue with the culverts?" I said, "So are you saying that those were illegally used?" And they said, "No, we're not saying that, we're just saying in the documentation, we couldn't tell what it was." So I think in an instance like this, where you, the county feels like that it is in the best interest of the county to not bid, there should be some discussion at this board about that, a documentation of why you came to this conclusion, and that that is then memorialized, so that when someone comes back, they can say, "Why didn't you bid this?" Instead of it just seeming like nobody thought to do it.
Right.
The bid event comes around, and then you have a discussion, and you could say, "According to our purchasing policy, if it's in the best interest of the county, we are not required to do that if we think that we're still getting the best price." And then you take a vote on that. And so it's the, it's the wishes of this commission representing the people to know that you looked at this issue in a fair way, and so that you don't get caught in the cadaver issue where the price tripled from what you currently had. So I think if you do that, from what I heard auditors say, it was really more a documentation that they couldn't tell from the paperwork that they could get their hands on. And so if that's the case, this might be an option to better memorialize how these decisions are made. And so, but I think that's what you were saying, Mr. Manning, that-
Yeah, absolutely.
You could do that. Maybe we just didn't do a good job on the front end of, of capturing why that decision was made.
And Mr. Smith, I think you're exactly right. Even yesterday, Ms. Allen shared with me some comparisons that she got when Florida League of Cities took over the health, well, took over the insurance partner with FAC-T. Am I saying that correctly? They partnered or underwrited or reinsured, is that, okay?
Or the municipal insurance trust.
Right. So when they did that, and they, they provided you a comparison of health insurance, just kind of at their leisure, I guess, that they're, they're provoking they did that. And you shared yesterday that that, you know, that was something that you based on, that was, it was, we were in a good shape, good premium because of the prices that you saw. And I understand that. So I think more documentation, and I even want to go where the fire trucks, on the fourth line there on page one, the county staff knew, yeah, we knew, and I believe Chief Romey does a tremendous job of finding this product. And again, Mr. Smith, this goes back, we could have documentation, how did you know? Well, here's how we knew. We knew because of these, this, and that, and then there's no, there's no wiggle room there. And bring it to the board, folks, I've done this, this, and that. Not saying that he didn't do that, it just, the auditors didn't pick up on that. So, all right, well, good, good discussion. Yes, please, jump right in.
Well, on, on that, and, and that's what we saw with the culverts, with these, we don't want to be caught in this again, that our paperwork needs to absolutely step by step how we came to that conclusion. I, I think that's basically all they're asking, like the culverts, where were they? Were the, you know, you know, Preston had to go out and do a lot of legwork to find the information, get everything together. If we'd have done the paperwork to start with, we wouldn't have had that situation. And then I'd have a, one more question, back to the bidding. If we have a contractor, local contractor, say the fuel or, or the cadaver or whatever, that wants to put in a bid on the next year, would we turn them down because we have a three-year contract or two-year contract?
They, they would register themselves as a potential vendor with general services, and then when the bid, when it was put out for bid, they would be informed of the fact that it, it was out for bid, and they would be afforded an opportunity to, to bid.
Okay, okay. Like, if we have a three-year contract, somebody, and we're into the first year of that contract, but somebody else would like to quote on it, they would not be able to quote on it until the third year, or would they be able to-
Not, not as long as the contractor who had the contract was performing satisfactorily.
Okay. And that's legal? I mean, that's, we're, what I don't want to do is make sure that we're, we're doing everything right.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. We're in the middle of a contract, and certainly don't want to be in the business of just terminating contracts, you know, in the middle of them. It just, it wouldn't be prudent, I don't think, or good use of, of staff's time to, to open up every contract in the middle and, and rebid it because somebody hadn't expressed an interest. Certainly, when that contract is due, you know, that would be the appropriate time to then submit a bid.
And we think it's always, and again, I'm just asking these questions, always better to do two, three-year contract instead of doing every year?
Practically speaking, that, that does make sense in most instances, yes.
Just to continue for the full, whatever term we decide.
Correct.
But I think what Commissioner Goddard also is saying, and then I'm not putting words in your mouth so you can stop me, if somebody who wants to bid, that doesn't produce an automatic bid. If I sent a letter that I want to bid on the fuel, that doesn't mean that in the two, next two years, when that bids up, that because I made a request, that we're going to go out for bid. We might be very well fine where we're at. Just because I'm a vendor, my letter of intent doesn't change the fact whether we're going to go for bid or not go for bid. Am I, am I right in saying that?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? I do want to say one thing about the culverts. And Mr. Tompkins, I was watching Dateline the other night, and I, I didn't know this, but I've learned that when you take a picture with an iPhone, it gives you latitude and longitude of where that picture was taken up. Saw it on some murder thing I was watching. But it was fascinating to me, because I thought about these culverts when that came across. And how much easier would it be to take that picture of that culvert, it gives the latitude and longitude, we know exactly, you know, every spot where those culverts are at? Now, you inherited this, so I, I understand that. Just saying, maybe in the future, that latitude and longitude might help us out a little bit. If you're going to speak, you got, come up here and, or you want to wait until-
Let me address that.
Okay.
We have already started that process. Our crew chiefs have the phones, we're taking pictures, we're getting GPS coordinates of every culvert, every county asset, but we just started on that, so it's a very monumentous task right now.
Oh, I'm sure.
But you're absolutely right. We will have all the county assets, GPS with photographs, so we know exactly what's going on, we can pull them up at any time. But we just started on that database within the last year, I guess, so.
Well, let me, while you're there, thank you for all the hard work you're doing, because it really shows in this county, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, please.
And I also thank you, because a lot of people not aware, you know, we have the fair coming up, and we had a mess over there, and Preston was asked, and I was impressed how quickly it was taken care of over there, so thank you.
Well, it's not me, it's our road and bridge crews and the whole staff, we're doing it. So they get a lot of credit for doing the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Leary, if there's no other questions, we'll-
Okay. Well, finding number two actually dealt with the culverts and picture frames. The question really centered around whether or not expenditures were for a public purpose. Probably Works has provided considerable amount of documentation evidencing the fact that the culverts were in public rights of way, and thus, the culvert work was a public purpose, that it was done in, in a public rights of way, and facilitated and improved drainage throughout the county. Perhaps the information that was presented to the auditors during discussion and review when this question was raised during the process wasn't as clear to them, perhaps as it could have been, and this additional information hopefully will clarify the fact that all of these culverts are in fact in the public right of way. And the issue relative to the picture frames, they questioned whether or not the framing and the Plexiglas and the anti-theft hardware was a public purpose expenditure, and regardless of what you think the value of that artwork may be, the fact remains that that artwork did become an asset of the county, and the expenditure of funds for framing it and putting the Plexiglas on there and obtaining the anti-theft hardware was to protect that asset of the county, and thus, in our opinion, was a public purpose expenditure.
Okay. Mr. Leary, I do have a question. Are we, do we have anything that defines what the public purpose is? And I'm going to stay away from picture frames, because that's, I don't get bogged down in that. But the reason I say that, we've had this talk at East Palaca Fire Station where there was potholes, and our equipment is stored in some of those fire stations. And Melrose, we talked about it, there's actually a road in front of their fire station, if you will, but it looks like the whole parking lot. George's Lake, we came across that, where their potholes would tear up our equipment. My question to you is, do we define what the public purpose is in any ordinance that we have? And these are legitimate expenditures under those provisions of public purpose. Because I think it's important, especially the, the one culvert that I was involved in, down off of Buffalo Bluff, where it was deemed to be a public purpose because it was draining all that area. I have maintained that we need to get an easement over that, and we did get a construction easement, but we don't have a permanent easement. So how can we go forward at this point and say, "Public purpose is identified as this?" And when we identify it as this, this is what we're able to do. If it's culverts on land, then we- need to really get the, the right-of-way easement across that. How do you see that? I guess is my question to you, the public purpose.
Well, I mean, I think that they're separate situations. I mean, I think that almost everything that, every dollar that the county spends is spent for a public purpose. I mean, I think, I think that performing culvert work on property that's not owned by the county is a separate situation than the county spending money for repair or maintenance or, you know, of an air conditioner that's attached to a county-owned building, clearly that's a public purpose expenditure because it's to repair an asset owned clearly by the county. Repairing a, repairing a pothole in front of the East Palaca Volunteer Fire Department that is in our right-of-way is clearly a public purpose expenditure because it's in our county-owned right-of-way. But repairing a culvert, a Buffalo Bluff culvert that you brought up, I mean, that, that had to be defined, I think, as being a culvert that, that was impacted by drainage, part of, being part of a drainage system affected by county roads, that then the county had to secure an easement for work on. So, I mean, I think that Mr. Manningham has, probably has to weigh in here, but I think we clearly have to make the distinction that it is, it is, it is a function of county government, and it is a legitimate, serves a legitimate public purpose for the county to expend funds on it.
That's an interesting question, because it's, it really, it's, it's difficult, I think, to provide a definition that's going to capture every situation for defining public purpose. But I think it really needs to be looked at more generally in that, if the expenditure's primary purpose is to serve a public good, and any sort of individual benefit is secondary, then you're serving a public purpose. And it's not to say there can't be an individual benefit at all, but certainly that would have to be secondary to the primary purpose which, of a public benefit. And I know that's, you know, that's fuzzy, certainly, but the case law and whatnot, and AG opinions suggest that that's it. Really, what you're looking at is the, is the primary benefit for the public, or is the primary benefit for an individual? And that's the test that you're looking at to determine whether it's a public purpose. Now, whether something is on public or private land is not determinative of that. And we've seen some AG opinions in that, in that regard. And you were, you were talking about the easement for, for that particular culvert, which if it's on, if it's on private property, certainly it's best practice to have an easement for, for that to remain, and for the county to be able to continue to maintain that. But having the easement in and of itself does not make it a public purpose. And there's actually a specific AG opinion on that point. But it certainly is best practice to have that. Now, going back after the fact, to a property owner and saying, we would like you to give us an easement, we can do that, but there's nothing forcing them to, to provide that easement after the fact. Certainly, it is best to get that, to get that upfront. And I, and I know that now that is a practice that has been adopted in public works.
My point is, if you don't mind, my point is, you know, basically, from now on, where things are in the broad brush of a public purpose, it might be beneficial for us as a board, and I know we were, we were briefed heavily on the culvert on Buffalo Bluff. Our attorney said, you can do this, it serves the public. I feel comfortable with that one. But when it says public purpose, it might need to be defined by staff and explained to the board of a more logical, this is your public purpose, and we're going to try to now start painting with a fine brush instead of broad brush. And then the board makes the decision, does it meet that public purpose threshold?
For individual projects you're talking about?
Well, I'm just saying, the ones that don't fit the norm.
Well, and that's what we've, we've addressed that in here as well. I don't remember where it was.
Paragraph, towards second half of the first paragraph.
Of?
Of finding two.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, the county will affirm in its updated procurement code that all purchases are for a public purpose and direct the general services director to document the public purpose in instances of wave competition, purchases from a sole source, and work performed by the county on non-public property. And I think that should help.
And maybe with-
With that transparency.
You know, maybe with board approval at that point, so that we're in the know when it comes to that. If at all possible, that's, that's just me. Commissioner Goddard, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Well, it's, Buffalo Bluff, for an example, I got a call, and I've been talking to the fellow down there, who brought this up. He is now being forced to put a culvert in on Buffalo Bluff, out of his expense. And his thought, you know, his thing that he brought up to me is, how come we did it down there, my culvert's going to serve a public, you know, it's also serving the public because it's moving the water down to the river. County owns half of, of where they want this culvert, I own the other half, how come I have to pay it? And I, I told him I would work with him on this and find out, but he's, you know, he did bring this up. How come if his water is, is to help the public, we don't pay for it? I said, because we don't. If you put in a new mobile home, which is what he did, then he's responsible for the culvert to get to that piece of property. But, you know, we need to word this, where we, you know, he kept bringing this up to me, and I didn't have an answer for him. I told him I would look for this answer. But there are, you know, I agree with, with Commissioner Harvey, we need to have wording in there that protects us.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, please, sir.
And I'd like to move on from this subject, we're drilling down too, too far on it. But the auditor general suggested that the opinion we got was one of legality, and we should have got a, an engineer's opinion, particularly a civil engineer. And that should be the case every time. That's all we need to do.
And that's written document, and that protects us.
It is.
Yeah, your engineer is going to, in each case, make that analysis to determine whether or not there is a public purpose for, for those situations, and, and why? What is that purpose? And that will be documented in the file.
One last thing before we move on. Anything that the county owns is a potential asset, and we learned that in the landfill decision that we made, and the discrepancy in price of what the contractor was going to buy it for, and what the consulting company said it was worth. The problem is that the, and I think governments are moving this way, Mr. Jones, if I may call on you, but we're going to start seeing where the county lists things as an asset on their balance sheet. I think Ms. Robinson said that last year. So with that, with this artwork with a value of around 900,000, if that is deemed to be that asset in the landfill, we'll start seeing some of those assets listed on a balance sheet. Is that correct?
The county policy right now is anything over $3,000 is capitalized and shown on the government-wide balance sheet.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's already being done. As far as the value of the artwork, that's, that's questionable.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Leary?
Okay. Well, finding number three deals with the Boston Volunteer Fire Department, primarily from our perspective, it dealt with the situs of that structure. I think the preliminary findings stated that the county didn't own the property where it was built, when in fact, the county did own that land. And the decision to build it on that county-owned land was made primarily because we did own the land, it was centralized with the branch library, the community center, all, and some recreational amenities were there. There was parking, all of which is owned by the county. It was, the old Boston Volunteer Fire Department was on the fringes of that property. And perhaps more importantly than anything was the citizens of the community wanted it built in that specific location. And the Boston Community Action Group, which is a very active entity, you know, they, they made a strong case for building it in that location. So that, that factor impacted, of course, by the thought that locating it in another, another location would have had costs associated with land acquisition and site preparation, which certainly would have been costs that would have at least probably been comparable to the site development costs that were incurred in that specific location, led the county to proceeding with putting it in the location where it currently sits. And, and I think of note was the fact that the final contract price was considerably less than the initial bid award, which we have noted in the last sentence of that, of that particular response to that finding. And moving on to finding four, this is a finding that, of course, the county does not dispute, and we are in the process already of preparing and disseminating a daily usage log for, for vehicles. Finding five deals with the property acquisitions of, at, at Nine Mile and Georgetown. I think we previously discussed the fact that the county's intent at the time was to pursue the satisfaction of the management plan for both of those facilities through trying to acquire grant funds, which we have been unable to acquire at this point, but that we will be requesting a formal extension to those management plans.
I'd like to point out, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that-
Yes, sir.
We have applied, though, for the grant funds.
Yes, we have applied for grant funds in Georgetown. Specifically, a couple of those grants have been, have been denied. One grant is pending, and frankly, has, has, has made the FERDAP approval list. Unfortunately, the governor's recommended budget doesn't include any FERDAP funds in the coming year, but maybe the legislature will provide some funding, and if so, we'll maybe receive FERDAP approval and be able to move forward with at least the first phase of satisfying that management plan on Georgetown property.
Thank you. You know what I see on this one, and the only thing I see differently is, is the fact that we relied on grants a whole lot, and we probably should have had a Plan B in case grants did not, you know, and maybe we couldn't, again, build the Cadillac, but we could build the Toyota. Not saying Toyota's less than a Cadillac, I'm just saying, we probably ought to have a Plan B when we enter into these major, because you and I have talked about what Mr. Taylor's dream was for Georgetown, and that was a pretty lofty dream, that would happen down there. And don't even know if we could possibly pull off that, you know, even if we had the, an open checkbook on that. So I, I think that's what we got to look at, is having a Plan B, that if we can't get the grants, how are we going to go from there? And on the Nine Mile project, I believe we're in talks with Water Management about taking, possibly partnering with us to manage that, because we really don't have any, any, and we might have a idea of what we'd like to do, but it's really, it would be probably better managed by Water Management at this time, so.
We have had some of those discussions, and I don't disagree with you about the Plan B. All we're simply expressing here is what the attitude of the sitting board was at the time of the acquisition of those properties.
Well, I, the only reason I say that is when we brought in the, the community center out in Enlaken, and that building was donated, the whole idea and the funding source was better placed from day one.
Mm-hmm.
So we knew that going in. We also, we got some high cost on that, and we had to whittle that down. You, you did a good job on getting that down to make it a functional facility right now. But I, I think that's where we're going to have to quit relying on grants, and hopefully for a promise of the future, and really say, okay, if we're going to take this on, or future boards are going to take it on, you need to have a Plan B in case the grants fall out. That's all. Thank you.
Under finding six, it deals with some over expenditures and some non-major government funds during the 14, 15 fiscal year. As indicated, you know, we frankly cannot explain why the appropriate budget amendments were, were not made by the budget officer who was in the county's service at that time. So all we can do is take a mea culpa on that, relative to the overlap of expenses regarding the county attorney. I think as we discussed at the, at the last meeting, those, those, those budget amendments and the, you know, the retroactive approval, even though it was widely discussed, and that overlap was something that the Board of Commissioners concurred with. The formal approvals were, were given at the, prior to the expiration of the fiscal year on September the 30th of 2016. Those approvals were formally given at, at the second meeting in September of 2016. And the auditors were, you know, they were here, they were on site, that information was provided to them. And we are including that formal action taken by the board, again, as an attachment. And hopefully they'll take another look at that and, you know, rescind this particular finding. Finding seven dealt with, deals with, you know, notice regarding the special emergency meeting during the time that the ballot issue for the Better Place Plan was taking place. And, you know, the county simply notes that, as the auditors noted, that that notice was legal. Would have been nice to have been able to be able to have provided more notice, but it was still a legal notice. But the county will continue to try to provide more, more public notice whenever the opportunity presents itself. Finding eight, we do not dispute that finding regarding the need to develop a plan to meet debt requirements for the utility system beyond 2032. And a written plan will be presented for your consideration in the not-too-distant future relative to that. And finding nine, an anti-fraud policy, one has been prepared, drafted, and will be presented for your consideration here in coming meetings.
Is that going to have a whistleblower clause in it, too, where we protect our-
I believe, I believe there is some language relative to that incorporated in the policy, yes, sir.
So someone could, could come to us or bring it to somebody else, and without fear reprisal?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir. And in finding 10, you know, we note the fact that we think county personnel do try to respond to citizen inquiries. Sometimes that's, people don't like the information that they get back, and sometimes they may be asking it of the wrong departments, but we do try to get, we true to, do try to have our employees provide good customer service. But if they don't receive that good customer service, those, that information ought to be provided to the appropriate departmental personnel. And we have noted that in future workshops, you will be discussing a financial advisory task force, an inspector general, an ombudsman- task force and inspector general and ombudsman, as you indicated that you would at the, at your last meeting.
There has been some concern about the bottom three. And let me, if we could talk about Financial Advisory Task Force. Basically, my thought there was, I think Mr. Hotellin had mentioned, no, Mr. Ross. But I'm looking at a, and we'll discuss this at a workshop, but I'm just, I, I think we need to identify a little bit more, maybe like a budgeting, some like an oversight, like our Better Place Committee that does, that looks over, maybe this group could look over the budgeting and the financial advisory. That, that was my thought, but that's just my thought. And I'm only one commissioner, and we'll talk about that more at our workshop meeting. Mr. Lear, I do want to say one thing before we get off of the, getting the documents. It is difficult to know what you're, what you asked for. And, and, you know, it's kinda like in my old office, when I said, "Bring me the file", that was the entire file. But here, there's so many moving parts. And yesterday, I asked for, well, actually, a few days ago, I asked for some files from HR, and it was 24 inches tall. And there was no way possible that that could have been copied and given to me. But HR was very gracious in allowing me to sit there. And, and actually, it took a half a piece of paper to get the information I was looking for. So, I think that's the biggest problem that I've seen since, in government, is who's on first and what's on second, and where do you get this information from? And, and it's not just about requesting the whole file, because the whole file is quite, quite large. It's requested, and knowing what to request and what department to request it. So, I think that when we talk about that person, when that time comes, whether volunteer or paid, that person can say, well, do you, what are you really looking for? You looking for that one document? Are you looking for, because that, I think that's where the rubber hits the rim. Ms. Papel, you were gonna...
I just was thinking about the redaction requirements, too.
Right. Yeah, there are things that need to be redacted. You can't just get, you know, personal information, social security numbers, and not everything is public record. And what is and what isn't, and, you know, but we, we strive to be as transparent as possible. And I really do feel like we do a good job. You just gotta go find it, you know, and that's a little bit more difficult at times. Commissioners, you've heard all the findings. Is there any other questions? I didn't mean to hog the conversation.
Lighten them. Hear from the public. I see you have some blue cards, if we could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. We'd love to do that. I do have a blue card. It does, not necessary for you to fill out a blue card to speak to us. It is recommended. But if you, we are going to hold these as close to the three-minute mark that we can to get through this meeting. Our first blue card is Mr. Tim Hotellin on finding nine and 10. Mr. Hotellin?
Finding one.
I'm sorry?
Finding one.
Finding, well, okay, I see it now. Finding one, nine and 10.
Sorry, after the fact. Tim Hotellin, 105 Riverside Way, San Mateo. My main concern is all of this has boiled down to the response in finding 10, that you're gonna discuss the concept of an inspector general. As anybody that's been here listening to me over the years knows, there's, just about everything the issue has been on contracting. The implementation of the contracts, the, the example, again, gone people, a contract for roadwork that required a written response if there's any kind of a complaint of any kind of a problem. And the response of the department head that wasn't resolved by correction by his superiors was, oh, we've taken pictures. We've discussed this. There wasn't a single piece of paper. But the contract specified paper. If we had an inspector general with the power, duty, and authority to resolve these issues when they're little issues, we wouldn't have this problem. If we had a purchasing plan or program ordinance that defined a lot of these things, public purpose, that did not, was not a system that allows single components of the county throughout the whole process and restrict any review of any contractual action to the person of the county administrator, the director of purchasing can't even do it, according to the, at least the most recent county ordinance that I have. But if you had a inspector general that's worth half his salt, he could quietly suggest, and you could fix some of this silliness. I believe, I hope you all got a two-page paper that, that Ms. Tabitha was kind enough, was titled, pardon me, Contracting in a Grown-Up World. That was done by an individual that was involved in senior-level contracting for the federal government for the long time. It specifies the procedures in the federal government, procedures that are apparently rarely followed here in the past, I hope. One example came to, to mind when they looked at the spreadsheet, and forgive me, it was a long one, and I think it's all the BPP money. But the, there was thousands of dollars that were spent. And then, four years later, more thousands of dollars spent, allegedly on the same contract. That was an extreme red flag. When you have a contracting action, you have to have it closed out within 30, 60 days after you're done with your work. Why is it two years later, the same money don't? An inspector general, auditor general, whatever, worth half his salt would have found that. Your auditors that you all pay big bucks to should have found it. And it wasn't. And I heard the beep, I'll try to get out of here. Two quick thoughts. The painting with a $900,000 value, that's a whole bunch of money. That's an asset that you don't insure. My problem with that is, there's no, and I've, and I've hit requests for information repeatedly this week. There was no piece of paper that suggests that this, how these paintings were offered to the county. There's no piece of paper suggesting a recommendation for purchase of these paintings to the county. There's no piece of paper that suggests a requisition for these paintings. There's no anything. Everything was done word of mouth by one individual on a, no single payer, I forget, the single-source bid. And despite what your findings are, there's no verification that this did anything, especially since there's, you know, hidden away. Last thought, and I'll be out of here. Tell me the difference between, between public purp- purchase, or purpose, pardon me, of water flowing down, on private plant, land, that Buffalo Bluff, whatever, that goes on by, and that's a good purch- purpose, and the purpose of water flowing past my driveway to get on down the hill.
You know, I think what we learned today, Mr. Hotellin, was that we're going to do better on all those items you mentioned. But I think in the future, the engineering department will give us a recommendation as to culverts on, on the public purpose idea. And that's what I heard today, if I'm not mistaken.
And Mr. Press is a breath of fresh air.
And I think that's a good move on.
But, but the fact is, your contracting procedures, both the definitions and the ordinance, that allow only a small entity to do any kind of oversight, any kind of review, any kind of recommendation suck. The compliance with whatever is there wasn't any better. And I just hate to have it repeat, because I get, I'm real tired of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak to us today? If so, Ms. Weeks, if you'll come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Roxanna Regan Weeks, Palacca, Florida. The issue about the culverts, I brought it to your attention at the last regular B O C C meeting. After the, Mr. Tompkins produced a justification list for the 19 locations. I have visited those at that time. I came here and gave you specific incidents and locations of, they just didn't jive with what was on the paper, okay? Have any of you bothered to check any of that out or taken any action whatsoever on that?
I can tell you, I have not had time to do that, and I apologize for that. It's on my laundry list of things to do.
Yeah. The, the thing is, is by saying that this culvert is in a public right-of-way does not justify a public purpose. For instance, the one on Cracker Swamp Dirt Road. There's a farmer that owns the left field, there's the dirt road that goes down it off of Cracker Swamp Paved, and then there's the right half of his field. This culvert was specifically put in so he could remove his tractors from the left field across to the right field without having to go up on the paved road. It does not serve a public purpose, it's not a thorough fair, it's private land. Since then, you know, oh, and it was also stated that that culvert had been inadvertently removed by the county, so had to be replaced. Mr. Spell came up here at the same meeting and said, "The culvert was not there previously", and we know that. And, you know, I'm just, I just wish somebody would acknowledge and say, "Yes, this, this was wrong." And we admit it, and all I'm hearing is a bunch of dancing and double speak, and that doesn't really give me any confidence that things are going to change. You can sit here all day long and say, "Oh, well, we're looking at this, and we're gonna discuss that, and we'll have a workshop." But you're not even acknowledging the problems, truly, I don't feel. It's, it's not gonna go away. It's not gonna go away. There's too many people that are involved now, too many people that are aware. They're really watching to see about these buddy jobs and things like that. And, you know, one of the things that got the biggest public attention was after we went to Tallahassee and the, it was talked about in the newspaper and things like that, the things that were said to disparage us and discredit us. And it was, it was just amazing. I mean, really, I couldn't believe public officials were out there saying the things they were saying, you know. I mean, I, I really don't even know what to say sometimes about this. I mean, it's just, you know, common sense would be to acknowledge there was a problem. And this is how we're gonna fix it, and we move on. But I'm not seeing that.
Ms. Weeks, thank you. I, you're gonna see this board. We are accountable, and we are going to do better. And we have admitted fault, there's no doubt. I mean, there's plenty of fault that we said, we have, we can't defend the undefensible.
Exactly.
Going to get this straight. And in the future, I think we're gonna put, I believe we're gonna have safeguards in there. I think Mr. Tompkins is going, what he started, the policy that he is, we're moving forward in the right direction and moving Putnam County forward. So, we thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Flag, please come up, state your name and address, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Carl Flag, 1700 Oak Street, Palacca, Florida. I simply want to say to the county staff, thank you. The county staff embraced, endorsed, and endured this season of audit. There were many individuals who leveled a lot of issues against the county. I'm a proud Putnam Countyan. I still continue to serve this community and will always, until my day of exit comes. I believe that this process will make us stronger, will make us better. I also believe that the constant review and revision of quality control policy, process, and procedural matters should be something that happens all the time. This county, I've witnessed staff working tirelessly to make us better. The thing that I regret most is when the conspiracy theory drives the order of business. We cannot operate with conspiracies, we can operate with greater transparency. And I just want to say, what I see overall is that this audit showed us how we can do a lot of things better, but it also verified the honesty and the integrity of those who work every single day to make Putnam County a better place. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flag.
Okay, is there anybody else, before we end our public comments, that would like an opportunity to speak? Okay, please come up if so. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Mary Kay Engelking, Palacca, Florida. I am here this morning to just say a few words about the culvert situation. I was there the day that Buffalo Bluff, they were putting in a new culvert, which was not needed. The prior engineer instructed the, the board, everyone, that a new culvert was not needed on this property. And first of all, if the county is going to put in culverts, you have to. Your first step is to get ownership of the easement. If you don't have ownership of the easement, the rest of it is just wasted tax dollars. I just want to read a little bit of some of this. Article 7 prohibits the state and its subdivisions from using their taxing power or pledging public credit to, to aid any private person or entity. The purpose of this constitutional provision is to protect public funds and resources from being exploited in assisting or promoted private venues. Thus, in order to satisfy Article 7 Florida Constitution, the expenditures of county funds must be for a per, excuse me, a public purpose. For example, an attorney general, which I really highly suggest to you, go to the attorney general's website, and every one of your questions will be answered by Ms. Bundy. So, it's a very important area, everyone should look. And I think then we won't be talking about culverts anymore, and driveways, and et cetera. Excuse me. For example, in Attorney General opinion, this office concludes that the expenditure of public funds by municipality to repair or maintain private streets in which the municipality has no property rights or interest, and over which the public has no easement or right of use, would appear to, appear to the public purpose. Requirements of Article 7, Section 10 Florida Constitution, this office, in Attorney General's opinion, 85-101, concludes that public funds could not be used to maintain a private bridge that was not open to or set apart from the public, and upon, upon which the public has a right to travel. In other words, the county goes through, they're gonna go to a private property and put in a culvert. Well, if the county's gonna put in that culvert, then it becomes a purpose open to the public. I can drive up and down that person's private driveway because it's a public purpose. So, that's where the language comes. Is it benefiting the private citizen and the public? You know, if you're gonna put in a major highway and you needed that area, it's got to be okay with the public, has access to it. That's all it boils down to, the access. You have to own the easement. And then also, somebody's gotta pay, like the one on Buffalo. That was a very, very expensive two, two-day installment. You had inmates that were installing this new culvert, which is illegal, to have inmates on private property. They were there, it took two days to install it. It was by an engineer saying this was not needed. Also, this property was in foreclosure. And I looked through it, and when it's a bank foreclosure... And I looked through it, and when it's a bank foreclosure, your bank is very say, "Hey, we fix everything." They had a private engineer come out and look at that culvert before they put it on the market. There was nothing wrong with the culvert. Also, with the one on Buffalo Bluff, and you got this little stream of water, there was no reports in the planning department or code enforcement, no hurricane reports, nothing that showed this was a dire need to put in this very, very new private culvert. So I know you're, it's all redundancy out here, but please, go to the attorney general's website, and it will answer a lot of your prayer, prayers, well, a lot of your answers. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Week. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else from the public? All right, seeing no other public comments, commissioner recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, what I'd be looking for is a, a motion authorizing the chairman to execute a cover letter and transmit the findings that are before you today.
So moved as stated by council.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible. Do we, does the chair have a second?
I'll second.
Have a proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. No other business comes before us.
I would like to thank, if I could, Mr. Chairman-
Yes, sir, please do.
-all of our employees throughout the county for the last 14 months, the extra time and effort you put into this. And I can only speak for this commissioner. I will be focused on your well-being, your cost of living, challenges facing you and your health insurance in the future, and I hope that we can get back to work and get these challenges put to bed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and I think we are working on that very diligently with the new committee, and we are looking at that. So we do want to take care of that. Is there any other comments from any commissioners? Mr. Smith, do you have any comments, sir?
Well, I'll try to make these brief. I think this process has, has been difficult, but I think it's one that's necessary. And I've made these similar comments at the start of this and that. Audits can be seen two ways. They can either be seen as criticisms of how you conduct your business, or you can take them to be recommendations on how you do your business better. And in the clerk and comptroller's office, because we get audited quite frequently by a lot of different entities on your behalf, we take those findings, if there are findings, to be an opportunity to do better. And so, just as former Commissioner Flag said and Commissioner Lible, this is an opportunity for us to now move forward. I've told this to you personally and privately. I think that these are exciting times for Putnam County. I think that things are starting to move, and that there's a lot of excitement that I see around the county in particular areas. And this is, is our chance to take the citizens' concerns and comments, and, and I take those very seriously, to do a better job as we go out in the community. And one of the things that your constitutional officers have talked about after hearing some comments, and particularly one time those from Ms. Weeks, was that we realize that the public doesn't realize a lot of what constitutional officers do. And so we're developing a plan over the next couple of years to go out and have town meeting opportunities with citizens in, in parts of the county, so that we can first tell you what we do, and then have an opportunity for you to ask questions of, of things that we may not have mentioned. Because those offices generally are administrative. We have no authority to write rules. All those come to us either by you or the legislature. So our duties are ministerial. But we know that if there's confusion from anyone of what our duties are and how we do that, then we have to do a better job of communicating that to the citizens. So it's the same for the Board of County Commissioners, because what you do and the work you do is complicated. And there are always, there's rarely two sides to an issue that you deal with. There's multiple sides to issues. But I think that we can take the work that's been done, the comments from the good citizens that have come and taken their time to share with us, and make suggestions to do better. And so I'm committing on behalf of the constitutional officers, because they said I could, that we're going to do our part on that side. And we know from the statements that you made here today that you will do that. But that also takes a third partner in this to make this work, and that's those citizens. So if you have concerns and comments, please share those either individually with us or at these meetings, and allow us an opportunity to do our research and then provide information back, so that everyone now should be in the loop of what we do. If we become more transparent, then that's always good. There will never end a time when we can't do better for the citizens. That is an ongoing issue. So I thank you for allowing me to make those comments. And once again, I love Putnam County, and I'm excited about our future. And thank you for allowing me to make those comments.
Well put, Mr. Smith. Thank you. Mr. Pickens?
I just thank staff and all the employees. I was not part of the audit as a new commissioner, but glad to get the responses and be able to send those to Tallahassee and look for their response. And just ready to be part of a commission that definitely is transparent and, and works hard for each citizen of Putnam County. And, and Mr. Smith says, I do take your comments seriously, and will work on those, and just to move this county forward.
Thank you. I did fail to mention earlier that I did speak to Commissioner Stillwell this week, and his health is improving. So he, his future is, he will decide what that will be, but he's trying to get back to normality of his life. So he is improving, and your prayers are working. So continue to pray for Commissioner Stillwell. Mr. Leary, any closing comments, sir?
Well, I'd just like to say that the, the findings and responses were a collaboration of many employees, put the individuals putting that together. And so I appreciate all the effort that people put into putting that together. And as was alluded to, this has been a kind of a long process for a lot of people, and they, a lot of people's nerves got frayed during that process. But hopefully, we'll see some adjustments to some of the findings, and hopefully, the audit, audit staff will take some of this information, additional information that has been offered and, and clarified, hopefully, and they'll make some, take that to heart and make a, make some adjustments in the preliminary findings, and we look forward to receiving that.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Mr. Manning, anything in closing?
I have nothing further, sir.
Yeah, because that whole back office has been sick over there, so no one wants to walk over there. It's not good. We thank you very much, and we appreciate the transparency that has been going on. We appreciate citizens' participation, and this meeting will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Good to see you.